It's never too early to start talking about next year's budget. We're gonna talk about it. Hopefully they'll come on here pretty soon. We're kinda running on, we don't know. You know? We got our best guests right now based on what we have in the way of block grant funding. But by the end of this week, we may have something completely different. Who knows? But we'll go forward with what we have. And at this point in time, block grant funding. Let's look at revenues. Here's how our revenues are gonna change for next year. When we did the budget for the current year 2014-15, we budgeted for a certain number of virtual school students. We actually came in a little bit higher, which we had hoped that we would. So we'll get a little bit more money in virtual aid. The local option budget and capital outlay, the state has cut us on both of those. Go ahead.
We're under a tornado warning right now until 7:35. According to the latest information we have. Dr. Dennis has gotta be monitoring this and seeing. Tornado appears to be moving northeast. I wish we'd kept the weather, man.
Oh, go, go, go! That's me. I'll be back. Stay home. Get up in the day, seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Yeah. If anybody else needs to take care of business, please feel free to do so. So the state has just arbitrarily cut. Not a lot of methodology behind it, but they're... The method in which they cut means we're gonna be reduced in our local option budget by $483,000 and capital outlay by $204,000. Going into next year, we're gonna receive the same amount of money basically that we're receiving this year. We'll receive the same money next year and then the year going after, two years out. So for the next two years, we will have a decrease in projected revenue of about $435,000. That's our first hurdle.
So those two years are 15, 16, 17, 18? Is that right?
15, 16, 17, 18. They cut us about $400,000 for this year. And then that money just kinda rolls forward that we're losing basically. Let's look at additional expenses. If we had to create the budget today, these would be expenses that would be in addition to things that we already budgeted for in the current year.
When the error began, tornado was sighted in Piersville.
Twelve miles north.
Twelve miles northeast, so it appears to be moving away from us according to Dr. Dennis and the information he's given.
It does change direction. What's our plan? Where do we go?
Restrooms.
Restrooms, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Christ planned this.
Yeah. And throw a stinker at it, or what?
Should've known our weather moved here. We headed here.
Yeah. Now where are we weathering them?
Feel my lines, Carolyn. I'm not doing that. Got it. Sorry, KJ. What you saying is important.
Hey, if we can laugh in the middle of all this, it's great. Yeah. All right. Additional teacher pay for increase in weighted enrollment. And there is a provision in the negotiated agreement that if we have an increase in weighted enrollment, there is additional pay that will be given to our teachers. And that is added to the base salary and continues forward. That will amount to about $250,000 next year and the year after. Health insurance. Because health insurance goes on a calendar year versus our school year, we will have some additional costs for health insurance that we will pick up in a full-year budget that we didn't pick up in this last budget. It'll be about $660,000. We will have additional transportation expenses, and that's made up of two pieces. One, if you'll remember, in the beginning of the year, we had some struggles with transportation. We did have to increase the number of drivers that we had, number of substitutes that we had available. That's a portion of that, $200,000. The additional piece comes in, in that many of our bus drivers were not eligible for health insurance benefits based on the criteria that we had previously. Under the Affordable Care Act, any of our drivers that work at least 30 hours a week, we offered benefits. And so by doing that, we've increased our cost there. So those affordable care... That's not anything we did that would've happened anyway. It's just the timing that that will hit. Funding of elementary secretaries. And basically what this is, is in the elementary schools, there are two secretaries. One of those secretaries, as I understand it, used to predominantly be a nutrition secretary, someone who would help with the lunch and breakfast and things like that. And the nutrition services group, they picked up half of their salary. As things have changed and shifted, what those individuals are doing really are more based for district services rather than nutrition services. So the district is picking up a little bit more of their salary. Even if we had not done that, we probably would've had to pick it up anyway because of the struggles, the financial struggles that nutrition is in right now, food costs going up, and things that they are seeing, they're not generating enough money to cover all their expenses. So one way or another, the district was one tap that at some point could've helped them pay their expenses. Maintenance of the salary schedule. Just to maintain the salary schedule for both classified and certified employees, it's about a half a million dollars.
KJ, would you mind if I explained that? We do have two board members in the audience that may not understand what maintenance of salary schedule is, but that includes...
Absolutely. When we are talking about certified employees, that gives every certified staff the opportunity to move across or down the schedule depending on if they have another year's worth of experience, if they have reached new degrees and designations that would require them to move into a different column on the schedule. Basically, it's just the standard raise that they are entitled to based on the schedule that we have outlined. For our classified staff, it gives them an increase in pay based on the number of years that they've worked. And that is just a standard. It's 10 or 20 cents an hour depending on how many years they've been in the district. And then the other item that we've had in addition to last year's budget is we've had the addition of four special education pairs that we have added at various times throughout this year. And at this point, we still have those four pairs on staff. So we would have to put them into the budget for next year. So all of those wonderful items are an additional $1.8 million in expenses that we need to add. You add that to the shortfall in revenue of $435,000. Before we even get started, we need to come up with $2.2 million in cost cuts, four additional revenue sources to make a balanced budget. And I do like things when they balance.
KJ, just a quick question on the special ed pairs. There's no additional funding that comes from either the feds or the state on sped pairs?
On sped pairs, we would have a small... I can't remember exactly what the... You wanna say, here is it?
About half, maybe?
Pretty small.
Yeah.
But that's additional?
Here's my options. I have none.
So I'm gonna share with you a little bit about what we're looking at in terms of an administrative reorganization. And the first thing in your package there is an organization in terms of leadership structure within the district. And there will be some changes here at the central office. Tonight, the board approved Dr. Dennis's resignation. And now Dr. Dennis is with us. As he enters another challenge in his career. But with that, we will do some shifting around, and we will be eliminating the human resources director position. We'll be changing the assistant superintendent for learning services to become assistant superintendent for student services. And we'll be creating a position of director of secondary education. And that position will become vacant. And the net effect of that, of all the changes here at the central office, will be the reduction of one and a half administrative positions here at the central office. Also, we will be making some changes out in the schools. And I wanna preface this a little bit with, none of these changes, including the reductions here at the central office, would be something we'd be recommending to you if it wasn't for the budget concerns. We aren't overstaffed in anything we're doing in the district. We're simply bringing these to you because of the magnitude of the budget challenges that we're going to be confronted with. So at the building levels, we're looking at the reduction of four, a total of four assistant principal positions. And that will shake out as a half a position at Garden City High School, a half a position at Kenneth Henderson Middle School, two one-half positions at the intermediate centers, and four half-time associate principal positions at various elementary schools. And that will leave us in the district with no elementary associate principal positions in the district. Again, this is not because we believe that's the most appropriate staffing level, but with the magnitude of the budget situation, we feel like it's a step that needs to be
Sorry for the pause. It's just to break this out, but we're trying to talk about these type of cuts. It's very frustrating. We're gonna need to... The board's gonna need to approve this administrative reorganization sometime this evening. So if you have any questions, now would be a great time to ask Dr. Marlin, or we can talk about it later this evening, if we need to allow the process to move forward. Well, the other options that we have is to implement additional program budgeting reductions. As you know, we did not do program budgeting this year. What we kinda opted for instead is to take a look at what we did last year. And this is last year's hierarchy of when we scheduled out program budgeting. And when we did that, basically to generate the money we needed, we went down through special education and made our cuts. And that generated about $625,000 in savings. These five departments were not... We didn't cut them. Rather than go back through the whole program budgeting process, we decided, let's start with what's already been done and unfortunately complete the process from last year. With those five departments, there are $570,000 that we can generate in cost savings. Now I'll just kinda walk through that with you a little bit, how that's gonna be generated. Here's the high school, how they would generate their savings of $127,000. You can see the various pieces. The biggest piece is they would lose one certified physician. And they would also decrease their teaching supplies, $49,000. Textbooks would be decreased by 5,000. We've got some various equipment. We would decrease some cost in our night school. That's how they're coming up with their $127,000 in cost savings. Any questions on the high schools?
Yeah. What's all involved in that teaching supply? That's 50 grand.
Anything that they need for their classrooms, whether it be food for the culinary arts, whether it be...
So is this campus-wide?
It's campus-wide, yes. It would affect every single department. We give that money to the principals and their cost center, and they have the discretion of how they spread that out to the various classes. So teachers are getting it up, paying for things themselves is what's gonna end up happening personally. Wow.
Do you do that? So you can't have that?
I know. At the middle school, they would eliminate three teaching positions. By doing that, they actually generated more savings than they needed to, so they would put their difference of about $21,000 back into teaching supplies. Same thing happens at the elementary. They would get rid... They would remove four teaching positions. They had some extras, they put that back into teaching supplies. Health services, they would reduce their staff by a .4 nursing position. And I have teaching supplies, it should've been supplies, I apologize. They would have about $3,400 they would put back into nursing supplies. And technology, basically, they had some projects that just won't get done next year. $48,000. And they were able to find some savings through notebook batteries and computer upgrades where they took three major of their cost reductions. So if we total all those, that's the $570,000 that we can find through implementing program budgeting from last year.
A quick question, and it's maybe connecting the wrong dots, but we just talked about the crisis management. And the crisis management team includes health services coordinator. Is that .4 that position?
No. Would you wanna address that?
No, but our... As part of our administrative reorganization, the leadership organization here at the central office, our health services coordinator will be half-time in this building, and she'll work half-time out in a building covering nursing responsibilities.
So we won't have a member of the crisis team that's part-time?
And a question on that backside. On the middle school, it said three teaching positions. So is that at each middle school, or is that at both?
That would be combined, total.
So three total?
Three total across the middle school.
And how do we decide?
Actually, that would be at the intermediate and middle school level.
I'm sorry.
Middle level. So not just at the middle school.
So one at each school? Is that what you're saying?
Actually, I think it works out. One at the intermediate center and one at the... Not one at the middle school.
And four at the elementary. So is that what push and retire, or we just wanna fill that position?
Yes, we'll be able to handle...
Depending on what elementary school you lose someone for retirement, that would be one of the four.
Right. No one will lose a job. There may be one or two that have to be transferred to a different-looking job, but no one will lose a job.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the administrative reorganization, which I don't know if you said the total, but it was about $450,000. We can implement the additional program budgeting reductions, which is another $570, so we're just cleared a million that we needed, 2.2. The other option that we have is to increase the local option budget. Right now, we are at 28.5 percent. Our local option budget is at 28.5 percent of our general fund budget. We have the legal right to go up to 30 percent of our general fund, can be in local option budget. If we were to do that, just to even have the... If we were to do that, we would generate 1.2 million in additional funding. That would max us out on our local option budget, but we could generate the revenue that we need to balance the budget for next year. One of the things that will be on the agenda for next board meeting is we are recommending that we pass a resolution, and you pass a resolution that would allow you the authority to go up to 30 percent. You don't have to go up to 30 percent, but at least when we prepare the budget next year and we approve the budget, you would have that option should you so desire to. If we do not pass that resolution by the 4th July first, we will not have that option, and we will have to stay at no more than what we're at right now.
That's a change with the block grant funding, the requirement to pass that resolution.
We had thought previously, or there was an option previously, that we could go to 33 percent with a public vote. That option has now been taken away. So 30 percent is even max that we will be able to generate.
I noticed this week that there's a House Bill 2423 that's proposing to basically put all school districts at 30 percent. And of course, that's part of that soup of what's going on at the sausage factory, so to speak. So I don't know how that's gonna turn out, and obviously, our discussions today have to be centered on what we know. But it is interesting that part of the discussion that there is essentially compelling all districts to go to 30 percent. Question I have on the 30 percent. What if we go to 30 percent and our valuation goes up locally and our budget income stays the same? Do we... Does that cut into... Do we have to reduce our LOB to community?
Yes, we would, because we would have... Well, if our valuation went up, then we...
In order to stay at 30?
In order to balance the budget, we could go down. But if we had to stay at 30, then it would still affect the taxpayers in a higher amount because their evaluation is going to go up.
And I'm wondering if...
That was just all gotten from the... This is a percent of the general fund. Correct.
Yeah?
Yeah. Once we hit that 30 percent, that's the top dollar that we can get there.
In a way, it looks like we may be going there anyway if that House Bill 2423 makes that. Well, it's interesting.
Their way of forcing us to generate the local tax dollars. Absolutely.
The other frustrating thing, of course, that's out there, and we said it before in the board meeting here, is that in the past, as a local board, we tried to be pretty frugal and pretty responsible about not raising the local LOB. Only when we absolutely had to. And I think that's just recognizing the community and that ethic. But with the current voucher approach, it actually worked against us in not raising to the max, because now we can't. I mean, we're restricted. And the local communities that did raise it earlier basically turned out.
They did not, absolutely. Because at this point, our state money's frozen. So any additional funds has to come local. But had we played our cards differently and had a higher LOB previously, we would be given more money from the state, and that would be the fixed amount. Well, to counterpose some of this as well, we're looking at trying to generate a lot more money to cover a lot of costs. Shawnee Mission, the school district, is... Has been charging for kindergarten, for all-day kindergarten. And they're now not going to charge for all-day kindergarten. And they're cutting a lot of other fees because they're doing well under this block grant. And we're a few pennies. I mean, this is ridiculous.
Two different schools apply for the school funding. You can play it as we played it, which is to try to keep the local option budget as low as possible and keep that money in the hands of the taxpayers. So that they have the discretion to spend the money on their families, so on and so forth. And you operate within the budget that you have. By keeping that money in the hands of the taxpayer, you only go to them when you need it. And that's what we've done. When I came to this district, we were about 15 to 17 percent of our general fund and our LOB. At the economic... During the economic downturn, we started making cuts, just like what you saw here tonight. And then we started raising the LOB. So we made cuts, but we generated revenue back to the district through that LOB. And what you're seeing tonight is that we're now at 28.5 percent. We're only a percent and a half from being at the maximum. The other school of thought is to play the maximum. In other words, get that into the general fund and operate at 30 percent. Operate at 31 percent. And now, operate at 33 percent. Because of the way we played it conservatively, we don't have the option to go to 31 or 33 percent now for at least two years. We played it very conservatively. I think we played it the right way. I think we played it the way that it was designed to be played. Because the LOB was to be used for extra things or to be used for an economic downturn, an economic slump. So not everyone played this the same way, but those that played it the other way are now being rewarded because they have those funds in their general fund coming in. A question was asked of me this afternoon. What if the board doesn't approve the LOB going to 30 percent? We've got 1.2 million in cuts that we're gonna have to come up with. I think what you're seeing this evening is $466,000 in administrative cuts, which is going to be painful from the elementary to the intermediate school, to the middle school, to the high school, to central office. Taking program budgeting down, cutting 572,000 is going to be painful to the tune of about 8.4 teachers, if I did my math right. To come up with another 1.2 million, the district will have to put together a district committee, probably composed of patrons, business owners, teachers, administrators, board members. And we'll be looking at programs. You're seeing tonight a little bit there, we're talking about supplies and those sorts of things. The outcome of that is teachers now will need to buy more supplies. And they've always bought some along the way, but there will be an increased need for that, probably. But if you start looking at cutting programs, everything will be on the table. I don't know about you, but I sure enjoyed honoring the band, the orchestra, and the choir this evening, and BBS. Four really good programs, and we have more good to great programs than what you saw this evening. Wouldn't it be sad to see some of those programs go away? We have all-day kindergarten. We only charge $25 a year. You mentioned Shawnee Mission, and I think they were charging $200 to $300 a month. The state only pays for half-day kindergarten. If we were to cut and go back to half-day kindergarten, that would be 15 teachers, roughly. To come up with 1.2 million, if you just use teachers, and I don't think it would all be in the realm of teachers, but it would be 20.33 teachers to come up with 1.2 million. To not raise the LOB would create a catastrophic situation in this district. I'm not telling you it can't be done, but I will tell you it's going to be hurtful. The cuts that you're seeing there for the million dollars is going to be hurtful. This is getting really serious for Garden City Public Schools. Would that audience or any questions that you have? You know, we live in southwest Kansas. For our orchestra, for our band, for our football team, for any of our programs to go on the road costs money. Shouldn't our kids that live in southwest Kansas get to have the same... Shouldn't our kids that live in southwest Kansas get to have the same type of opportunities as the kids that live on the other side of the state? Should there be a difference in how kids are educated because of their zip code? This block grant will not take into consideration the fact that we're growing and we're starting to grow in this district. This block grant will not take into consideration that we're getting more homeless kids, more kids on free and reduced lunch over the next two years. And we will have more of them because in the last ten, we've had more each and every year I've been here. This is the hand we're dealt. And what you're seeing this evening, there's been a lot of thought that's going into this. We've been planning for this since before January. We knew there was going to be a shortfall in the revenue. We've known it for over a year. KSDB's been telling us for over a year that this was going to happen. So, we've been trying to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. I hope our legislators will come up with something that alleviates some of this pain
Well, another thing that frustrates me, you know, when we were doing our KSB false money meetings, talking about the Rose Standards, and, you know, it was just people in southwest Kansas who were at those meetings and trying to figure out, how are we going to handle applying all of the Rose Standards, especially where it comes to the arts? If we're cutting, cut more, I think all of us here are huge supporters of the activities that we have seen here today and don't want to see any cuts or anything to any of the extracurricular or co-curricular activities. But the discussion was, well, how can we get creative by getting the community more involved? How are we going to be able to provide the person who excels at violin or cello or the big instrument that has a body bag to see them excel? And it was, all we could come up with at that particular point was, is there a local teacher who they can go to during school day that they can get credit for? Or the gymnast who needs to have more specialized training or something like that? But some of these things are things that, in my mind, we should be doing as the school districts and having orchestra and having choir. It's just so frustrating that our hands just seem to be, they keep getting tied all the time. And I realized that I was blessed because I was in that zip code growing up that had the 33 percent probably already at that point. But, does it mean that we should, I, I'm just frustrated, I'm sorry.
And I just use, I just use band workers as an example because we celebrated their successes this evening. But it could be, districts have, for instance, eliminated custodians and only clean their building every other day. That, that's a way to capture, might create some health issues, certainly it will not be, might affect the cleanliness of our buildings. Some districts have cut libraries, cut all the libraries in their district. So, when we talk about cutting programs, if we get to that, if we choose not to use the LOB this time, or if this continues to get worse down the way, you're looking, all programs would have to be on the table to be discussed. And there won't be any good cuts.
Start cutting programs too, you're gonna, that's what kids get excited about, you know, in addition to their education process. And if you're gonna have drop off rate increases and you're not gonna graduate with any kids, it's just a terrible cycle to start, so it's depressing on many perspectives. I want to stress that we're not asking the board to take action to raise the LOB tonight. What we're asking in meeting is the opportunity to adopt a new resolution so that it allows us to, if we need to, in the future. We need to have that in place by June 30.
Right, and we'll bring you the text of that resolution later next meeting and probably ask you to consider adopting it.
Basically, this evening, we're kind of giving you an overview of starting the budgeting process.
So, do we have any follow-up questions regarding administrative reorganization for Dr. Carlin or for program budgeting for KJ?
Not on that specific.
Okay, fine.
Just as, I think we've got to do this, but also I hope that we can coordinate a little bit with the other three taxing entities all the way, see what they feel compelled to do so that we have a sense overall of how we fit into New Burton that's coming to New Burton.
Any suggestions on how we could do that?
We'll know. Dr. Carlin will certainly know what the other entities are doing and we communicate back and forth all the time as they're building their budget, we're building ours and we'll know where their land is, so we can count in the city.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, KJ. It's time for a board open discussion. I wanted to say hi to Nada. Appreciate you coming. We saw Jennifer earlier, so just wanted to make sure you knew you were here and we appreciate that. And how did the board member, conservative scout, did you learn a lot?
I did.
Yeah, that's good. You're gonna learn a lot in a lot of the first two years and then some, so. All right, any other board open discussion items?
I've got one. The Chamber of Commerce is still accepting nominations for the Crystal Apple Awards. So, if you know a teacher who you would like to nominate, this is the 20th anniversary for the Crystal Apple. And I believe that Mike, who's kind of one of those people spearheading this, is hoping to get all of our educators who have won the last 20 years to come back for the dinner this year and be recognized again. So, I believe that they're accepting them until the end of May, but don't quote me on that. But if you go to the Chamber website, there's a direct link, Roy Zine said yes, that they are accepting them until the end of the month. There is a link to make the nomination and it's very, very simple. You can just put down the teacher's name that you're wanting to nominate. You don't have to go into great detail. We're trying, they're trying to keep it as simple as possible this year. So, if you have someone who's impacted your life or the life of one of your kids or grandkids, please nominate them.
Anything else? Okay, the next board of education meeting will take place on Monday, May 18th at 6:00 PM in this room. We do have, need to go into executive session. The first one will be for 15 minutes.
Negotiations. He'll be in negotiations first and that'll free up some people to leave.
Okay. Sure. Yeah, 15 minutes for negotiations.
I move that, Madam President, I move that we go into executive session for matters of employer, employee negotiations because of this matter, we're discussing open session and might jeopardize resolution of the negotiation issues for a period of 15 minutes to begin at 8:05.
Second by Alex, in discussion, all in favor, motion carries.